Yeah, well, we're out in the lobby, ma'am, so I'm allowed to ask questions of a member of the press. You're gonna have to deal with it.
You're welcome.
It's obviously something pretty important. It looks like potentially Mr. Joe may have committed a felony and a gross misdemeanor when he altered documents that elected officials ended up passing on behalf of the district. Hopefully, you guys can just keep it down to one felon working for the library system. Hopefully, there's no more that pop up and do wacky felonies and gross misdemeanors. Uh, no, about Mr. Joe altering the website and board documents that were voted on by elected officials.
I'm aware of the incident.
Is it an embarrassment to work with a seeming felon who's altered records of public officials? As the business and compliance officer for the Pierce County Library System, does the director and board of directors trustees have confidence in Clifford Joe maintaining compliance with regulations, et cetera, in light of his been caught fabricating and altering public records, which in Washington State is a criminal act? Is he the public records officer, ma'am? Why did you apologize in a letter to Mr. Goads?
You guys related?
Not at all. This guy just stared back from weird. What's that?
Do you have consent to record me?
Absolutely.
He was let go, right?
Oh, no. Oh, no. No, because I think what they're worried about is it's gonna blow back on them. So mind your own business. Go do your own thing.
Okay, but don't record me.
I'm, I am recording you right now. You're not gonna do, you're not gonna do anything to stop it.
Real quick, uh, can I get some information from you?
I do not want to provide my name. Just wanna be clear about that.
Okay, well, what, how can I identify you?
And he's with Inland Media.
Inland Auditing Media.
Inland Auditing.
Okay, but I need to understand who you are. You need to explain to yourself because you're recording me.
Sir, in no universe, and I'm gonna be very clear with you here, okay?
Okay.
You will never know who I am. Can I be clearer about it than that?
You're recording me and you have something on, on your, on your, on your, on your face. Can you?
It's called a mask, sir.
Hey, everyone, I am Free. It's November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I'm in the area of Parkland Spanaway here in Pierce County. Head to the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. Last night, as you saw, I was at the Pierce County Library System confronting Executive Director Gretchen Caserotti and the Board of Directors with evidence that I have from a person I know. Uh, I referred to that person as App. App, you're an awesome person. Thank you for everything that you do. You're a superstar in, uh, working on public records and all sorts of other stuff, uh, to bring an enormous amount of tips and leads my way. Thank you, as always. I'm going there to confront them about what I believe is evidence corroborating a felony committed by Clifford Joe here. Who is the business and compliance officer for the Pierce County Library System? I believe he violated RCW forty point sixteen point zero one zero, bringing an injury to a public record by altering the, uh, documents of elected officials, the elected trustees of the board of the library district for Pierce County. The director, Director Caserotti apologized to someone that sent in emails and said, yes, we've, we've reverted those documents back to what they should look like. He also, Mr. Joe, also altered the website, another public record, to make himself the public records officer. I don't know why Mr. Joe did this. I attempted to get, as you saw, comments from Gretchen Caserotti, the director, as well as from board members, but they refused to, uh, actually provide any answer.
Mr. Joe, you got any comments about your, uh, email here saying you are the public records officer for the Pierce County Library System?
I don't have any.
Why did you make those comments, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna forward request to you right now.
Why did you alter the documents, sir? Director, you have any comment about that, about Mr. Joe?
I do not.
Saying he's the public records officer?
I do not.
Is he?
We are going into our closed session.
Is he the public records officer?
Thank you.
Is, ma'am, I'm asking him about whether he's the public records officer.
You're welcome to look at our policy and the website.
Is he the public records officer, ma'am?
They accused me of trying to get him on gotcha moments and whatnot, which is, uh, completely silly. So we're gonna go over here and see if we can, uh, get a complaint and provide this evidence to the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. See if we can get something going.
Hello, I need to speak to a deputy, please.
I don't have any on staff here. Are you trying to file a report?
Wow, that's a lot of cop cars out there.
This is a training facility.
Gotcha. Yeah, um, I, I do need to, uh, provide some documents, uh, that I believe evidence a public official in the Pierce County Library System committed a felony.
Okay.
So I'd like to...
I can give you a non-emergency number and a deputy can meet you somewhere.
Ooh, yeah, I mean, I'm just here, so, and I don't wanna give out my phone number. So I'm sure you can see by my clever, uh, gator here, I just don't really wanna be identified. So, um, yeah, just like to see if I can get a deputy to show up.
Okay, if you wanna take a seat, I can, um, see if I can get somebody.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sorry, say that again?
I talked to the sergeant. He's gonna send somebody over, so go ahead and meet.
Sure, I, I get another question for you. You said this is a, a training location?
Yeah, we do mostly training here.
Gotcha. So it's not like a regular precinct then, or?
Well, it is a precinct, but we don't ever have deputies on staff, 'cause they work in their car.
Fair enough. Yeah, makes more sense that way. Okay, thanks.
You can report online as well. Which do you refer?
Are you recording me, sir?
I'm just standing here.
For what reason?
I don't need to answer that.
But are you recording me, though?
I was recording before when you walked in.
Yeah, but for what reason, though?
I'm not gonna answer that question. Who are you?
I don't know. I don't, I don't have to answer you either. If you answer me, I'll answer you.
No, you don't need to answer me. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, so you can go across the path of precinct, there's, there's someone in person there, or you can call your, you could, uh, all, send out your, your number or file online.
You're recording me and you have something on, on your, on your, on your, on your face. Can you?
I have, sir.
It's called a mask, sir. It's called a mask.
Yeah, but I wanna see who you are, because I don't know. You're recording me and I don't know who you are.
Sometimes you don't get what you want in life, killer.
It's not about what you want in life. I have rights too. I'm in this building. I came in this building. You're recording me, okay? I don't know who you are. You tell me you're someone.
It's a public building.
You have no idea what introduced yourself to me.
Sir, sir, stop being disorderly, okay?
It's not disorder. I'm trying to explain myself.
Sir, calm down, okay?
I'm, I'm, it's not about calming down. I'm trying to explain myself. You're trying to put me in a situation, and I'm not, I'm gonna agree with you.
Right.
Because you're trying to push me in a situation that you're trying to think that I'm doing, and I'm not gonna agree with you today, okay?
Okay, don't agree with it then.
Okay, but I need to understand who you are. You need to explain to yourself because you're recording me.
Sir, in no universe, and I'm gonna be very clear with you here, okay?
Okay.
You will never know who I am. Can I be clearer about it than that? You're never gonna know who I am.
I'll find out.
You're gonna walk along and do your thing, and nothing's gonna change. You understand me?
Okay.
Do you understand me?
Okay.
Okay, never will you ever know.
Okay, just know you're on the record, though.
Okay? So mind your own business. Go do your own thing.
Okay, but don't record me.
I'm, I am recording you right now. You're not gonna do, you're not gonna do anything to stop it.
For what reason?
I don't need to explain that to you.
What reason did I, do you have to record me?
Guy, I'm here for a completely separate reason. You need to behave.
But I'm recording you. I'm not okay with you recording me.
I'm here working on my own business. You need to stop.
I was talking to him.
What are we doing?
And he started recording.
I hear you.
Fine, sir. I came out here to...
You guys related?
Not at all. This guy just stared back from weird.
Yeah. Because now you're confusing me.
I know.
I have to be, I have to make sure everything is right, okay? Now, I was, I came out here to talk to him, and apparently when I was talking to him, he was recording me.
What's that? Hey, how's it going? Actually, just, uh, waiting for deputy if I could just make my, uh, report to you.
Okay, you're being audio recorded. Obviously, I am too.
Um, I'm actually, I came here today because I believe I have evidence of a Pierce County Library System employee having committed a felony.
Okay.
And the director of the library system for PCLS has admitted it by email, so I'd just like to provide you guys with this to see if you guys will investigate that.
Okay, I'm probably gonna have you start over with him, 'cause he's probably the one that will actually write the report on that.
That's what?
Uh, and take care of that, so I'm gonna have you.
Lieutenant, do you have a business card I could get, ma'am?
What's that?
Do you have a business card I could get?
Uh, I don't think I do. I don't, sorry. He'll get you the call number and stuff.
Thanks, good man. All right, have a good day, sir.
Okay, sir, I'm W. Watkins. You're being audio recorded.
You bet.
Recording.
Yep.
Uh, what's going on today?
Well, I just wanna submit some documents to you from, um, an employee of the Pierce County Library System, two employees. I believe one of those employees committed a felony by just, uh, altering public records.
It's kind of very, very weird.
So I wanna provide those documents to you guys, make copies of, and, uh, just submit that report. I'd like to see if you guys will, uh, actually, uh, look into that, that issue.
Well, I'm just a patrol deputy, so if someone's gonna investigate a flagrant infringement...
Sure, that's fine.
So I don't know who you are, and you to me either, like I mean.
I mean, I'd just like to at least start here. I'm willing to provide my, uh, email address. You guys can reach out to me if you have any questions.
Sounds good, sir.
Oh, yeah, you bet.
Sounds good.
So basically, the, the, uh, issue is this. I went in to work on a story about the public records index, not the, not the most exciting thing in the world, but I'm a journalist. I was working on a story regarding the Pierce County Library System not having their records index available for inspection.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I went to the board meeting last night to ask questions about that, and as a consequence of all this happening and public records requests being done, I discovered that the picture of that guy right there, Mr. Clifford Joe, he's the business and compliance director for the Pierce County Library System.
Uh-huh.
He responded to this individual here by the name of, uh, let's see, I can take a look at that real quick.
Someone asked anonymous?
Harold Goads.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I, I've got an email address for tips and leads, so if people send me tips and leads, I gotta look into this stuff. So, uh, Mr. Goads asks for who the public records officer for the library is.
That's him.
Well, he says he is the public records officer. He's not. The Washington State Register, um, has a listing of every single public records officer for the entire state.
Uh-huh.
And it's not him. Now, that's not a crime. That's more of a civil issue. However, what is the crime is he went and altered the website, changing it from Petra McBride...
To him?
To him. Additionally, though, and here's the really crazy part, he altered the documents of elected officials on the library system's website to account for him being the pro, even though he's not. And he almost did this real time with this Harold Goads individual who was, oh, sorry about that.
You good with him?
We're good. Thanks. Um, basically was, uh, altering this stuff seemingly real time, so...
Are you on record?
I'm here. I went to go and ask questions. If they had a comment, they did. That's fine. If they don't, obviously, I have to answer the questions. However, um, RCW forty point one six point zero one zero makes it clear if you alter, conceal, destroy, uh, any public record, um, that is a Class C felony in Washington State.
Uh-huh.
So I'd like to see if the Pierce County Library, or the Pierce County Sheriff's Department will take this report and investigate Mr. Joe's alteration of records.
Okay.
Um, one thing that I think is probably the most poignant for you here is that, um, he literally says, "I am the public records officer." It's in my job description, completely untrue. But then additionally, um, Ms. Caserotti, she's the executive director of the Pierce County Library System.
Sure.
She ends up saying, "Hey, I was, you know, out of town, doing my thing. I looked at this. Um, as executive director, I take it seriously. We have restored the current information as previously explained. I apologize for this." And then in this email right here goes on to say, "I appreciate to Mr. Golds," or Goads, "I appreciate the, uh, critical review. Um, we're looking into this," uh, and confirmed the pro authorized by the board, which is Petra McBride. So he altered that public record, which, when you look in the Public Records Act, it defines what a writing is, and it's websites, of course, paper, uh, sounds, audio recordings, video recordings, websites, all of that are records. So what I'd like to do is just, uh, see if you guys are interested in having these copies, making copies, um, for, I would assume, probably a detective or something like that, and see if they can look into this, 'cause I, I think what's a particular note, I know it's not, we're not talking about robbery, murder stuff here, but at the same time, um, you know, if we're actually catching public employees altering records, and we can't have any trust or faith that the records are truthful and accurate, as a journalist, I can't, you know, work on stories accurately, and of course, we can't hold our government to account if they're altering records.
Right.
So that's what I'm looking to accomplish here. Uh, if you'd, like I said, if you'd like to make copies of these, um...
Can I just keep those?
Well, well, you know what? Oh, no. I've gotta, I wouldn't say yes. I've gotta go down to the state auditor's, um, office and get this done as well, 'cause I'm gonna ask the state audit the library system for fraud.
Okay.
Um, do you guys have a copy machine or anything? I just didn't think to actually make any copies.
I could take photos of them.
Sure.
Real quick, so why do you, I just, a quick question, and if you don't have an answer, you don't have an answer. It's...
Sure.
Why do you believe he's doing this? Like, are you, are you a victim of this, or are you just reporting?
No, no, no. I'm just reporting it. Uh, definitely not a victim of it. I mean, I wasn't the one requesting the records. Mr. Harold Goads was the one that, uh, requested the records. I just, as a journalist, like I said, I find it, um, very problematic that a public employee would alter records, especially records of an elected official.
Sure.
Um, I mean, can you just imagine, like, the sheriff having his records altered by you or something like that? I mean, that would be completely crazy to discover that, 'cause you wanna trust the sheriff naturally. Um, so in this case, I just find it shocking, and I think it's something that needs to be looked into. Um, so yeah, just reporting on it, just getting that out there. Uh, I also partly think this hopefully can be investigated by the Sheriff's Department, because the elected officials who I confronted with this last night just did not care. They're, I showed, I, I spoke on the record at the meeting. I was willing to show them the evidence here, and the elected officials themselves and the director just seemed to not care that employees are, you know...
Yeah.
Possibly committing felonies.
I hear you. It's frustrating.
Yeah.
Okay. Real quick, um, can I get some information from you?
I do not want to provide my name. Just wanna be clear about that.
Okay, well, what, how can I identify you? Just the email?
Yeah, just email would be fine, so...
Just the email.
Um, email address is anonymous, A-N...
It's out there.
Yeah, that one right there, yeah.
I don't need it anymore.
Okay.
Um, any question for me?
Uh, you got a business card?
Yeah, I do. I do. Uh, you want your case number?
Uh, please, that'd be great. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind writing the lieutenant's name, I think it was Kadow, K-A-D-O.
Kadow. He is, he is, um, I think traffic-related.
Oh, okay. It's not that I'm gonna reach out to him. It's just so that I, you know, have an accounting. I spoke to these people on this day.
Yeah, it's Lieutenant Kadow, K-A-D-O-W.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't know his badge number.
That's fine. All right, I'll go ask the sergeant out there or someone else, so...
Five, four, three.
Thanks for your time, though.
Last four. What's the last four, my case number? All right. So here's my last name, Watkins.
Okay.
Wrote it in the wrong place by accident, but it's Watkins. Badge number's five, four, three.
Sure.
Uh, that's your case number.
All right.
Um, if you have any follow-up, um, I would recommend either going to South Hill. The address is on the back.
Okay.
Um, that's our main precinct.
Okay.
Um, if not, you can just call it an emergency, and I'd say, "Have a follow-up for this case number."
Yeah, that's right. I'll, I'll probably just go to the South Hill one. I, like I said, I'm on my way to go to the audit, the state auditor's office, so I figured...
Right.
I'll stop by here, 'cause it's kinda heading on south, sort of the Elbe precinct. This is as south as it gets.
Well, there's all here.
Oh, yeah, thanks, man.
Okay, well, appreciate you being cool. Um...
Oh, sure.
Other than that, man, I think we're good.
All right.
Okay.
I'm just gonna put these away, man. You have a good day.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
I'm gonna be going to the state auditor's office to, uh, handle this as well, so that's it here for right now, and I'll see you guys over at the state auditor's office in just a moment.
Hello.
Hey, can I help you?
This is the right place. I was looking for the auditor's office. I'm just looking to request an audit, please.
An audit of what? Let me get around here.
Sure, you bet.
Get a tablet. I am in training, but if you need me, let me know. Okay, thank you. Is that a camera?
It is.
Is it on?
It is, yeah. I'm recording by the camera and, uh, this camera right here, yeah.
I'm just gonna make sure you got my best side.
Hey, I think you're gonna win no matter what today. Um, so I would like to request an audit of the Pierce County Library System for fraud. And good fortune, I'm gonna make the auditor's job really swift today. I have emails from the library system themselves where they admit to it, so...
Wow.
I know. How often do we get this, right? They did the bad thing, they said it out loud. Let me just get the, uh, documents here for you. He altered the elected officials' signed official documents or board policies that Petra McBride is the records officer and swapped out his name to it, then lied about it, and then his...
This is plain illegal, I think.
It's a felony. Yeah, it's a felony. Um, so...
And I'm not the person that handles this, but we do have a fraud...
Totally, yeah.
Yeah, we have a fraud team.
Yeah. So he says, "I'm the public..." His name's Clifford Joe. He says to the person who sent me the tip and lead, I'm a journalist, um, saying, "I am the public records officer for the Pierce County Library System. The role is specifically identified in my job description." It's not. Uh, so there's that. The director then responds to this person after they complained and says, "I just saw that we," I take it seriously, "we have restored the current information as previously explained." There's that. He makes the most money of anyone in the entire library system, makes a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year as the business and compliance officer. He makes more than the director.
It's not too shabby.
It's not too shabby, and I'm like, "Why would you do this?" So I confronted him at the board meeting, and I asked him, you know, "Why did you alter these records unlawfully?" And he's just like, "No comment." The director didn't care and was upset. I confronted the board.
He was let go, right?
Oh, no. Oh, no. No, because I think what they're worried about is it's gonna blow back on them, so I think what they're thinking is, "Well, if we just try to find a way to sort of smooth this all over and make it go away, everything's fine." But, you know, that's all of our tax dollars getting...
Right.
...screwed with, and...
Well, we, I, 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 I don't know a lot about it, but I do know we have a great fraud team.
It sounds like it. I've, actually, a lot of my journali-, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but a reasonable amount of my journalism is predicated on the auditor's reports.
Yeah. Okay, let me just...
Thanks.
All right, cool. Well, you ladies have a fantastic day.
You too.
Thanks for your time. Take care.
You too.
Hey, everyone, I am Free. It's November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. I'm in the city of Tacoma here in Pierce County. I'm up on the hill, getting ready to go to the Pierce County Courthouse, and, uh, this is because I am going to provide documentation to the city, or I'm sorry, to the county council. So for those of you in other areas, uh, Pierce County has a county council, which is like a county commissioners effectively, so they're effectively the executive branch of the county. So I'm going there to provide documentation about what happened at the library board meeting on November thirteenth for Pierce County. You may remember that story here. So what happened is, as you saw, is I provided evidence which proved that Clifford Joe, the business and compliance manager for the Pierce County Rural Library District, seemingly unlawfully altered documents on the website, policies from the trustees, as well as the website declaring him as the public records officer, and then altering appointed officials' resolutions, which declared that somebody is or the public records officer. What's that?
Do you have consent to record me?
Absolutely.
Ah, just kidding. How you doing?
What's that?
How you doing?
Good, how about you, man?
Doing well.
Good.
Yeah.
So...
Documenting the city?
Uh, no, actually, I'm working on a story about the Pierce County Library District and what I believe were some felonies committed by some of their employees.
Really?
So I'm going to confront the, uh, city council with evidence about it right, or the county council...
Oh, yeah.
About it right now, uh, to see what the county's gonna do about that.
Probably nothing.
I would guess you're probably right, so...
Yeah, they don't like to be held accountable, do they?
They don't, they do not. The trade currency of the government is humiliation, and boy, they do not like it. I assume you probably watch a lot of YouTube channels where citizen journalists go out and do stuff.
Yeah.
Nice. Well, uh, my channel's Inland Auditing Media, so I am Free.
Inland Auditing Media?
Yep.
Okay.
I am Free, so...
All right.
Check it out.
Okay.
Throw me a comment out there. Like, share, subscribe. Take care, man. All right, so I got a local worker around here, definitely likes citizen journalism himself. Sounds like he likes freedom. All right, well, I'm coming down here to go in there to, uh, work on, uh, this council story, and it looks like there's some sort of a fire drill going on here. It looks like a bunch of jurors are leaving. It looks like the complex has been emptied, so I'll go figure out what's going on here and, uh, yeah, try to get to the bottom of this. This is, uh, unexpected. Yeah, they know what's going on?
Fire drill went on.
The fire alarm? Someone just pulled it, or?
The sergeant guy said that, uh, on the seventh floor, somebody bumped into it.
Wow.
And they were just demoing walls or something like that. That's what they told us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, yeah, I just saw this juror. Oh, you're one of them, okay.
Yeah, we just finished our video.
Wow. You know anything more about what's going on in there? I, I was told that a fire handle was pulled on level seven?
I pretty much know what you know at this point.
Were you on shift in there?
Mm-hmm.
How long ago did it happen?
Literally, like, four minutes ago.
Oh, wow, so it, right when I was coming around the corner, okay. You have any updates coming across your, uh, phone or anything?
Not quite. We're waiting for all clear, but luckily, at least judging by what I can gather, everybody's safe. Everybody got out. There's no one trapped, struggling. Everybody's totally safe. It was probably just a mistake. We're taking our precautions, just in case.
Fair enough. It's clear to go in? Do you know what happened, sir?
Uh, the fire station activation on seven.
It, it was a what?
There was, uh, accidental alarm activation.
Uh, it was accidental, okay. Thanks.
You're good.
All right, so yeah, there you go. That, what that lady was telling me, uh, a moment ago, that it was an accident up on the seventh floor, uh, appears to be true. So, uh, as you can see, all the jurors getting ready to go back in, potential jurors.
Morning.
I am looking to see if I can speak with someone. I don't know who, but I'm looking to provide some documentation to the council about what I think may have been felonies committed by a Pierce County Library District member, a employee, and, uh, when confronting the trustees and the executive director, uh, they appear to be covering it up, and uh, they appear to be covering it up. And from what I can tell, it's up to the county council to deal with those kinds of issues, so.
Okay, what's your name, if I may?
Steve.
Steve?
Yep.
And you are with, uh, any particular agency, company?
Yeah, I'm with Inland Auditing Media.
I'm sorry, I was multitasking. Steve with whom?
Inland.
Inland?
Auditing.
Auditing?
Media.
Have a seat there, Steve. I'll let someone know you're here.
Okay, it's Inland Auditing Media, by the way.
Media?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Sir.
Hey, Brian. How you doing?
I wanted to connect with, uh.
Steve.
Steve?
Yeah.
And he's with Inland Media?
Inland Auditing Media.
Inland Auditing Media. And we had a fire drill this morning, so we've all just literally come back into the building.
Yeah.
But I just told him that I wanted him to follow up with you with why he's here.
Yeah, I'm actually just looking to submit some documents to the council. Um, I just published a story about the Pierce County Rural Library District having had an employee by the name of Clifford Joe seemingly committed a felony by intentionally altering trustees' policy documents, uh, for which the Executive Director apologized and admitted that they were changed back. So in Washington State, that's a felony to alter documents like that. Um, so I wanted to produce the documents to the council, because when I confronted the council, um, or I'm sorry, not the council, but the trustees, as well as the Executive Director in a board meeting, they appeared to not be concerned and their comments so far on Facebook have been saying it was all just one big misunderstanding. So A, I wanted to see, uh, if the council has any comment on this, uh, if I could submit these documents to them and additionally, see if they're willing to commence a hearing uh, in compliance at twenty-seven, twelve, one ninety, which is the commissioner's authority in appointing and removing, uh, trustees. Seems like a pretty, uh, significant story where they've been caught red-handed altering documents and now the commissioner's own appointees don't seem to be all that concerned about felonies being committed in, uh, uh, at the library district, so.
Okay.
Are, are you familiar with any of this? Have you heard?
I'm not, no, I'm not familiar with any of this. Um, you can certainly submit the documents. Um, I don't know, we don't have a, we don't have a lot of council members in today, except for the two that are doing the, um, flood control zone district. But, um, I'll give you my, my card and I can set a, I can set something up for you.
Yeah, I got a, uh, got your card right here.
Oh, do you? Okay, all right.
Uh, just wanted to see if I, because I'm already here today, so I, I mean, I'd like to set up a time maybe to, uh, talk with one of them, but additionally, uh, submit the documents today, just since I do have them already.
Yeah.
Here. Uh, who can I submit those to?
Um, can you submit them to you, Alicia?
Yeah.
Alicia, okay.
Yeah, and then I think, uh, it's transmitted to the chair.
Yeah.
And then, uh, yeah, just, uh, just send me an email and then I have to go in this meeting right now, but I'll respond.
Yeah, sure. All right, thanks.
All right.
Appreciate it, Brian. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, so what I would like to submit and I'll put these, I guess, in order so they'll be easiest to.
Okay.
Move through.
Okay.
Well, Alicia, I am very glad that nothing happened to you, yours and your home last night.
You as well. My dog, he kept.
Oh, animals always go crazy in that. They always go crazy in that. All right.
All right, well, nice meeting you.
Hey, likewise.
Business card, anything you want to leave?
I don't own me.
Is your contact on?
Fact, I realized I don't even have my media badge I usually have. I don't think.
Is your contact in these documents at all?
I knew. I do have my media badge. I knew I had it somewhere.
Is your contact in here at all?
Uh, it is not, but I'd be happy to write down my info on a scratch pad if you're, or a.
There you go.
Stick it out if you'd like.
Grab one of those.
Thank you very much, Alicia. I hope you have a good day.
Thank you, you too. Appreciate it.
You take care now.
You too.